The time is nine fifteen. The next item on our list is, uh, let's see, what do we have here? Actually, we don't have, uh, so the next item on our list is a presentation by LCCWMA.
We have other business that Ken Cooper.
We can move to other business, yes, that'd be fine. Let's just move down, Ken Cooper, in discussion, building department fee. You wanna step up and fill us in on some of this?
Be short. Morning.
Morning.
Did your mic come?
No.
You might have to turn that mic on, the button's on the back.
It's all pretty loud.
Well, we can hear you. Perfect.
Basically, on the building side, I can't find any fee increase, period. Period.
At BUR.
None, zero.
At BUR.
At BUR.
History of the world?
So, I'm at this proposed portion, or this is just a discussion, let you guys know. Um, there's a process you gotta go through with state and here. If you miss college and divisional vision, you get a state, college here. Basically, um, it's time to raise fees, um, you know, anybody's vodka can't chew, it's, you know, six bucks now, not ninety-nine cents, vodka, coffee from the, everything's increased. Pencil papers.
So Ken, what are, except for building fees? What are your building fee prices right now?
So.
I think it's on the back of the, uh.
Yeah, I didn't wanna, I don't wanna throw much at you, you know, like you're gonna overwhelm me, so. So, like I said, you know, it's a discussion, I'm throwing it out there, you'll get plenty of that there. You know, perhaps you're gonna be wanting to be involved in this. I'm sure. But, let me go into this, um. I've got a few fees from other jurisdictions, Harney County, Clamette County, Deschutes County. Some minimum fees, uh, single-family dwellings. So Lit County's, single-family dwellings, a hundred twenty bucks minimum fee, I can do their thing. Harney County's one fifty. Clamette, single-family dwelling, three eighty-two. I can do them on a calculator.
Yeah, no, I, I can see it.
It, it's just, it's.
It's hard for me to compare to Deschutes County, but I, I, I understand we're, we're not.
No, I'm comparing to Clamette and Harney.
Yes, I, I do see that.
Deschutes we put in there.
It's down there, just underneath, I understand.
Deschutes we put in there because I'm sure one time or another, Deschutes is a little rural. But they're not, you know. But you can see that, the price, that's all in the I. I'm just, I'm just getting it, it's time.
Yeah.
It's time, it's time to catch back that up. I did have a little, uh, so, I wanna present this kind of, one of those cards.
Hook card.
You know, that's full house.
By the, from old records?
I did, in a wall. And so this is a permit fee, nineteen seventy-nine, uh, the sum is seventy-eight bucks. So, whether that's just a, you know, one or two family dwelling permit, or whether it's just for a fixture, uh, you know, we have a minimum fee of seventy-two dollars, you know, if you wanna just, if you wanna put just a, you know, fixture, uh, you know, pay seventy-two bucks, that one's seventy-nine, so. Uh, you know, if it's a, you know, four-year. Period, that's, that's four-years. On top of all that, um, you know, some of the opposition might be, you know, yeah, I can't, I, there had to be some increase along our lines, and so I, I've talked with some, uh, Stacy Gaines, you know, has been here, I don't know, a long time. And I have asked her if there's been any increase, there hasn't, that she knows. And so, that pretty much tells you that she, you know, she would know, she would have been here, but if there's been any increase. And we just.
So what do you?
I can't hammer. If there hasn't been any increase, it's about. So, I can show you papers, I can show you all the information, I can compare it to one county or the next. You know, so, so your next question is where do we go from here percentage-wise, you know, what do we want to increase it to? That's what I wanna get to, I wanna skip all this, we know what needs to be done, let's get, I don't, I wanna get through this process. You know, so, with that said, um, I also wanna, um, I mean, I, cause I have a feeling we're gonna increase it, we're gonna go ahead at some point, but I wanna try and set it up so it's a percentage increase, you know, every five years, every three years, something. So, so, you know, the next processor down the line doesn't have to, you know, it's gonna be automatically increased. So, what that number, we're still working on it, and I'll give you guys some definitive stuff later on.
Do you have a recommendation for what you think the speed is ought to be right now?
I wanna be in between, I wanna be in between these, obviously, I wanna be above Harney County, Harney County's, um, Harney County is, the state runs Harney County. Um, at, you know, I get, I get these papers, um, you know, these, these, uh, memos, the numbers and stuff, and, uh, so proposed, um, budget stuff, so, you know, successes in the past year, significant issues in the year ahead, department goals, so on and so forth. Okay, so one of my goals, at some point, would be to pay Harney County over, and that's just that much more revenue that's gonna come this way, instead of state. Now, what have we already done, uh, we've already taken electrical program from the state, you know, that's not an easy task for the state to give up money. Lake County hasn't, so, I wanna continue on, I wanna, I wanna, uh, you know, build. I get, I get calls constantly, um, people, you know, out of state coming in, um, it's gonna increase, I believe, you know, this year, hopefully, you know, twenty-twenty, it'll be great, but, but I'm starting to get those calls from, you know, these paradise, these towns at BUR. They're looking for a place to come, they're waiting for the insurance money for their house, or maybe they didn't have insurance money. And so they're looking to build, you know, they're looking to set some roots somewhere else.
Now, this single-family dwelling fee, is this the only thing that you're looking to increase, or do you wanna increase some of these other things, like the minimum fee?
So, the, the.
Do you think, or do you think that maybe?
They'll be, so, so, the way it's split is, you know, commercial work, Red Rocks is a great example. They give me a, an evaluation of what that job's gonna cost, okay? State already gives me a breakdown of what, what we're gonna charge them for permit fees, it's a percentage of that total estimated cost. Okay, on the residential end, it's, it's, uh, it's what, you know, the county adopted, it's what, what you wanna, you know, within reason. You can't, and I can't charge, you know, a thousand bucks for a permit, the state's not gonna, it's gonna be a red flag. So, if we stay, you know, if we stay in the middle there, you know, it'd be, uh, it's a compromiseable increase, I'm not, I don't wanna charge them what Clamette's doing, and, uh.
Yeah, Clamette is even higher than Deschutes on a, on a single-family.
On some, on some stuff, it's, it's so hard, cause it's, you know, things are broken down in figures, things are broken down in one, two-family dwellings, you know, so on and so forth.
So, and their electric fees, obviously.
It's like what you say, what do we increase, we increase the minimum fee, or we increase, you know, the whole shebang.
Well, that's just it, it's or, do you wanna increase some of these, or do you wanna increase this versus increase the others?
That's what.
And that's what I'm kinda curious is to find out if you, I mean, because our minimum fee is fifty-five dollars, are you looking at increasing that to increase the revenue, or do you wanna increase that plus the single-family dwelling, um, plus the, the manufactured dwelling? Is it, is it either or, or do you wanna increase, bring all of these up to some sort of standard, is that what you're?
We're gonna create, we're gonna increase the whole, all, to the whole scope of it, through, through fixtures, through, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna increase the minimum fee.
What's the fee on the fixture?
Per fixture.
The average fixture, I think we were always looking at it, but Jen.
There's a, there's a breakdown somewhere.
There was like a, it's like nine dollars or something like that for some of the different individual fixture ones, which is why you have the minimum fee, if someone's.
Right, but you're not coming in there and just paying that bucks, you know, for that fixture.
Absolutely, because you have the minimum fee.
Correct, correct, so, so you, you know, you did that seventy-two, and then, you know, but what we do is we work, you know, we try to figure out what'll be less expensive, what's the best route for people to go. That's why we have the option of going minimum fees on BUR fixture, or, or, you know, if you meet that one, two-family dwelling, and it's less expensive to go that route.
Yeah.
And it covers more, so, so, you know, I, I work with everyone. And, you know, as long as you're willing to get your permits, I'll, I'll work with you, you know, how it is. Bottom line is, fees can be increased, because everything else is increased.
Yeah.
You know, and on top of that, so, so another logical, um, cause I, I try to run this business-wise, and so, if you look at it, uh, you know, if I go to, if I go to Christmas Valley, you know, I do that hundred-mile trip, okay? You know, all those fees are paying for my service.
Yeah.
To go there, right? So, so, say, say something's not good, you know, write it up, like a man didn't do, and leave, you know. I have the right and ability to charge them a reinspection fee of eighty-six bucks, you know, I would really work with people, you know, rather than, you know, charge them that way, so, please look at it that way as well. You know, I still, I was, I still wanna be able to have that relationship out there with people that I do, um, with, with increasing fees on this end. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a, you know, nah, we can't, we can't increase fees right now, you know, and. Because I'll, I would have no choice but to start charging reinspection fees, that pays for, you know, an hourly, if it was, if we're paying for an hourly inspector, I'd have to do that, because it has its own point, you know, fuel, hours, whole shebang, so.
Mark, do you have anything?
No, you guys pretty much covered it, I think we need to go on a percentage, you know, my personal feeling is go on a percentage per year increase, um, whatever you wanna do.
And, and, and the other thing I want people to realize too, um, that, you know, there, there might be a time, you know, there might be a time where it's just, you know, construction is not going that well, something's not going that well, you know, well, I mean, it's, you gotta, you still gotta work with it. You can always decrease, you can't, you know, can't, I, I'm not, I can't increase when nothing's, when it's, when it's, there's no money, after nothing's done.
All right, well, we'll continue to look at this, the only last thing I would just add is just, um, I mean, I think Clamette is pretty high on their single-family dwelling fee. Somewhere in between, I think you're, you're kind of in the right place.
Cool.
I don't think, uh, I mean, I, obviously with, we're, we have a shortage of housing in Lakeview and Lake County, as far as, we wanna try to encourage people to build, we wanna try and keep that cost down, um, and, uh, we wanna encourage businesses to move here, obviously, as well, so we wanna keep that cost to a minimum, but, it's, this is another example of Lake County being behind the times. Which is, yeah, from every other county in the state, so that's, I'm just trying to. Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and we'll continue to have conversations on it. I'll probably come down and visit with you and Jen at some point, and just get a, wrap my head around it.
Absolutely.
We can all continue this conversation.
Yeah, Jen's a huge, huge resource on, on, you know, a lot of these numbers, you know, I, like I said, I run it like a business.
Both, both you guys are a resource, the whole county.
I, I do wanna, and this is just not FYI, just, just a recommendation, um, you know, you had, had the Dr., Dr. KCC here, um, you know, and, and listen, to, to, you know, what's going on around there, um, but you really, someone really needs to push towards some kind of trade schooling here in this county, period.
I've, I've been working on that, so.
Which is great, I, I'm glad, you know, and, and, like I said, if you, you know, if you need some, um, if you need some advice, or, you know, some, um, you know, it's, it's, it's easy, I, I see it in my head all the time, you know, a county has access to, you know, platforms, whether you wanna do it at school, or, I, some building, whatever. But, uh, you know, these trades, these trades guys, Joe Mack, I, anyway, can, can teach classes, um, state-made classes, you know, I could teach it, but I just, I did, I have before. And if, if that's what it takes to get something like that started here, but, uh, when you talk about behind the times, uh, you start losing these trades guys, which none of us is getting any younger, uh, you mean, we're talking, uh, going back to stone, and that's not, nor am I moving forward, nor moving backward. So that is a huge, um, huge deal, big ordeal for you guys. I, I hear it's a big deal, but if, if you need, you know, I'm more than willing, if you, if you need someone to talk to, go on a construction inn, or a building, building cozing inn, or a business inn, set it up, and, you know, pitch that, stuff those guys, I got another problem with.
Sounds good, yeah.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Think, think, I told Jen thanks as well, just for the time that I spent for office.
Yeah, and Jen, and we all know, yeah, I could've, uh, you know, you, you guys' professional opinion, time to raise fees, uh, raise fees.
We need to, we need to tie it to the cost of living, the CPI index, you know, every year that you're not raising fees to keep up with inflation, you're actually going down.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's two and a half to three percent a year, if you start adding that up over twenty years, if we can look back, it's.
Yeah, but we're gonna have to raise it more than that, just to catch up.
So they think we go, we get a, get the, get the fees to where they're fair right now, and then implement a, every other year, cost of living increase or something.
Yeah, cause this, this discussion, I mean, I still gotta deal with the state, and you know, there's, there's a forty-five-minute, or, I mean, a forty-five-minute, or forty-five-day process, you gotta deal with them, notifying them of fee increase, um, like thirty days or something, you know, we gotta have three discussions, you're gonna have to throw it out there and, uh.
Money's on top of that.
Yeah, anyways, um, there's little heaps to jump, but, but I'll be asking for input, you know.
Yeah.
Percentage-wise, number-wise, um, like I said, I don't wanna be higher than, you know, I don't wanna go, there, there's nothing, not looking for any crazy, I don't wanna put anybody under a pinch, you know, times are tight, you know, as it is, and, uh, but I cannot stress the trade school deal enough. And like I said, I'm willing to help out, um, it, it's hard for me to go wanna go teach again, it's a whole different, uh, it's just, but, but these trades guys are, I mean, you know, they can, they, they can do it.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any other comments? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next on the, uh, list, other business is paying chrome ride, budget resolutions.
Is that better? Yes, that's good.
Good morning. So I'll, uh, briefly explain the resolutions before you. These required, um, a supplemental budget process, uh, that is triggered by the amount that the expenditures are increasing in these funds. There's a ten percent threshold, once you meet that threshold, you're required to notify the public, give them an opportunity to speak, or, you know, gather information, or make comment about the increasing expenditures. So what we had to do with these is notify in the paper, um, tomorrow's hearing, allow for public comment, and then, after that process, approve or not the resolutions that I'll talk about right now. So the first one in your list there is, uh, two thousand eighteen dash zero eight for our wolf depredation program. Really, this was, um, carryover dollars from last year that we thought we were gonna have to send back, but we didn't at that time. So it, it carried into this year, and changed a little bit of what we could do in the program this fiscal year, and because this is a standalone fund, it's very small, that ten percent threshold is met really quickly. So, um, what the resolution will do is increase the beginning fund balance, and then also increase materials and services and projects and programs. Mel, did I explain that? Okay.
Well, so, we applied for the grant, and we got it before our fiscal year started, and then they had extra money that the state, or the federal government allocated to them later, so then they dispersed that same amount equally to the, the states again, or the counties.
So.
So we ended up getting two checks, one, one in the last fiscal year, and then one in this fiscal year, and we sent all of it back, except for what we allocated to Willa County.
And you did two thousand, how much did you do?
We had two grants of two thousand dollars, we sent one thousand dollars to Willa County for their extreme depredation, and I returned three thousand dollars to the ODA, uh, two months ago, or the, in February, sorry, so. So we don't actually have any money in the funds, those funds are for prevention only, if a depredation occurs, then the state reimburses for that. But I just applied for our next, our next grant, so we'll have another soon.
The next resolution is two thousand eighteen dash ten, this is for the mental health fund, which we are under contract with Lake District Hospital to provide all our mental health services. The state and GOV funding for mental health is increasing, probably both on services we're providing and our per capita funding. So, in the following pages, you can see where my anticipation of state flex funding is three hundred and seventeen thousand, but when you look down through the grants and the state dollars, we already, year-to-date, have collected about four hundred thousand. So, because we pass all these dollars through on a monthly basis to Lake District Hospital, it requires an increase in that contract service line to pass those dollars through. We will increase the state resources three hundred and twenty thousand, and then increase that contract payment three hundred and twenty thousand. The next resolution, two thousand eighteen dash eleven, is for the railroad fund, um, we were allowed to assign the Connect Oregon Six grant that was previously awarded to Lake Railway, um, a couple of years ago, several years ago. So, in order to spend those dollars, we need to bring it in through this resolution supplemental budget process, if we're expended. So we will increase, uh, state resources three hundred and fifty thousand, increase materials and services for the repair and maintenance of the track, three hundred and fifty thousand. That is materials and services, just to clarify that as well, it's a tie replacement program, um, so it ends up, it's, it's kinda like maintaining a road, it's not a capital expenditure, we're not adding capacity to the railroad, we're not, um, adding additional trap or anything like that, you're just maintaining what you have, and so it's materials and services.
Just in basically ties and whatever else, materials and, you know.
So again, tomorrow, we will open the public hearing at ten AM, um, after we've received public comments, we can deliberate, and then pass these resolutions or not tomorrow.
Yes, and I will not be there in person, I will be on the phone, uh, but, uh, Commissioner Alvison will be present.
And if you have a few minutes, I wouldn't mind giving you an update on my NACO legislative conference trip.
Absolutely, love that.
Um, again, thank you for allowing me to represent Lake County in this process, I hope everyone gets a chance to visit Washington DC, there is, um, a lot of respect in history there that, you know, makes you very proud to be part of this country. So I'll tell you that the very first day, um, the Public Land Steering Committee met right off the bat to discuss a few policy resolutions they had before them. One was changing some of the, um, the grazing allowability of, on federal lands, adding more flexibility to it. So, not tying, uh, the government's hands on when that grazing starts and when it ends, opening that up according to the, the environmental characteristics that are in place at that point in time, also kind of allowing more flexibility on the animal unit months, you know, that's, that's what they're doing. But then also, um, not opening up to all domestic livestock, so talking about sheep, and goats, and, and different things other than just cattle that we kinda focus on. So, um, that was obviously heavily supported. The second, uh, policy resolution that was open for discussion would've asked NACO to support the federal government stocking any kind of prescribed fire use during a state-declared wildfire season. On the surface, I understand the intent of that, but the, the group in discussion, and I, and I brought up some points as well, felt that was too heavy-handed. If we wanna be in a partnership aspect with the federal government, we probably should not be telling them when and where they can use certain tools or not to manage their federal lands. So really, when we got down to the nuts and bolts of the issue, the issue is wanting to ensure that that partnership at the county level is, in fact, very transparent and very open, and so that means having county partners at the table even when these prescribed fire plans are being written. Prescribed fire, um, these, the, the planning that goes into it is a lot of science involved, a lot of process, I mean, it gets down to like what the humidity can be, what the temperature can be, what the wind directions can be, and so, I think, you know, if, if the county can feel more involved in that whole process and understand where and when and why and how all these prescribed fire plans are going into place, there might be more comfort there, more understanding of that tool being used as a federal government to manage, again, millions and millions of acres that we feel at this point in time are not being managed, and are putting all of our communities at risk because of the fuel loads in those areas. So, um, once the language was changed there to open it up more to a partnership, and then more of a, let's all sit at the table together, that did pass as well. And then there was another, um, the third resolution Public Land Steering Committee passed was environmental, um, again, getting county partnership at the environmental goal process from NEPA, and, um, there's another agency over there, I wanna say it's CEQ, I don't know why that name's coming to mind, so that was supported as well. So that was Saturday, also heard a lot of great things from, um, the federal agencies in terms of really understanding that county partnership value, and trying to change their regulations and processes to be more open to that. I think when you start looking at both the priorities from the Forest Service and the BLN, you're seeing that in how they wanna treat acres, how they wanna involve, um, local governments. So, I think that was all very good news. As far as other, um, hot topics that I've heard about, I think, um, one of them, I'm glad to hear today that you're gonna have some of them, Census Bureau. The two thousand twenty census, uh, those dicentennial census, um, processes is what allows for a lot of funding, federal funding to flow through according to population, and also your representation, and so the Census Bureau is looking to more of a, um, online documentation with that, but they're fearful they will leave out certain segments of population. And so it's nice for us to be involved in ensuring, um, that all of our residents are involved and understand the importance of this process, and we allow them all the tools that they need to make sure that they respond, and are part of that data collection process.
So, Ann, before you continue, I wanna go back to the first stuff we were talking about, on the grazing, so, the legis, uh, the committee, the steering committee, so they approved the, the grazing as far as all animals, and being able to expand the, um.
What they would call shoulder seasons of the grazing.
And so, so possibly they could stay out later and turn in earlier.
Yes.
And possibly add a few AUMs, and so, and then they accepted that.
So remember, this body, all, this body is just a, a steering committee to provide NACO direction to help propose or push law changes, so.
But I mean, the, the NACO part of it agrees with you, you're supporting that.
Yes, yes. Um, it wa, it was fun to sit around the room, the Public Land Steering Committee, um, all introduced themselves, the committee's probably, oh, I'm gonna guess it's about forty-five people. The committee is probably, oh, I'm going to guess it's about 45 people, if not more. And so everybody has an opportunity to state who they are and where they're from and something about their county. And so Public Lands, primarily Western U.S., primarily rural. And so you're talking to a lot of people that have more cows than people in their counties. And so the support for, you know, using animals to graze to help reduce wildfire risk, if that helps, is great, you know, that support is very evident. We were there right after some of the discussion of the Green Deal. And so one of my favorite comments from that introduction period was that they did not care if their cows were farmed. So I was like, hallelujah, here we are. So it's a fun, it's a fun, down-to-earth group of people that are very passionate about these rural federal lands issues. And so it's fun to be part of. Again, census stuff, the other thing that priority for, one of the priorities for NACO is, I want to read this, "Boost broadband deployment and accessibility while preserving local zoning authority." NACO and the, there's a rural, another rural county group that partnered to create an app. So this is the formal, formal push of this app that I want everybody to download and use. Really, what NACO and this rural group is doing is collecting broadband speed data throughout the country and especially in rural parts of the area to show FCC the data to say, oh, here in this area, it does not meet the federal minimum standards, both by speed or coverage. And so I have this app on my phone. It's easy. You just click it and it runs its speed and it gives you a little report. The beauty of this tool is that they want even places where there's zero. So they highly recommended that law enforcement use it where they're out and about responding to calls and everything because even that zero, that zero data point is very valuable to this process. And NACO and this data can help the FCC tremendously. Because FCC is getting information from industry. And industry is saying, yeah, we've got good speed there, we've got good coverage. This data will show that it's, while, yeah, in some areas there is, but not as much coverage and not as much speed as maybe what industry reports. So it's not controversial. They're just trying, they're trying to help. They're trying to show, hey, let's, maybe we can do better. Because really, when you start thinking about infrastructure needs, obviously broadband is a tool that everyone needs in the new business, the advanced business. So I will hand you these flyers, but I have a bunch of them and I'll send them out in the email, too. But this is the app to download.
We need to get one of these to the hospital and to law enforcement, like you said.
Yeah.
Everybody at the hospital was using it to show that they're not.
Well, I can actually take this up with me tomorrow to work in emergency management meetings. And I'll invite Daniel Tagg and some of the other law enforcement officers up there. Because they struggle with this all over the state. It's not just in Lake County. The issue is coverage is pretty wide.
Another focus for NACO is promoting county infrastructure priorities in a comprehensive infrastructure package. We've heard a lot about the transportation bill that's being discussed. Part of the transportation bill may fund the permanent secure rural schools and gallant fund concept. So it's important from that aspect, but also the need for transportation funding in our country. So my son and I actually got to sit in a briefing from Blumenauer on the transportation ideas that he's proposing. And really, one of the big things is, just like Kenny's talking, the way the federal government funds transportation hasn't been increased since 1993. And so it's depleting that highway trust fund. It's depleting what we need to get done in our country. And so there's a going to be significant debate on what that increase looks like and how it's calculated and what it's on. But, you know, we look at our infrastructure needs here. FAA does a great job of supporting our airport. But even those dollars have to be matched with state or local dollars and they're, you know, few and far between. Our railroad does not get any federal funding unless we are awarded a grant. And so I've been able to speak to a couple of different people back in D.C. about the disconnect on that. Like, why do public airports get funded from FAA but public railroads don't get any funding at all? They're still valuable.
They still have to be under the jurisdiction and all of the regulations, but they don't get any of the funding.
So when I brought that up, I had a few eyes light up and go, oh. Because a lot of railroads aren't owned publicly, but boy, when they are, they really need some help. So I got to speak to quite a few people about that and who were helpful in trying to find funding for our railroad. And I were also excited about what our railroad means in terms of the biomass project. So Pat Wyden's presentation on Friday, I was happy to hear him talk again about the renewable energy credits that they're working on that will benefit the biomass removal from federal lands significantly. Again, thank you for allowing me to represent Lake County back there. I really hope that everyone uses NACO resources and services. They've got a great website and an explorer kit to get a lot of information about federal bills, priorities that they're working on, and just even facts about county statistics and things like that. I think you guys are aware of that. But it's nice to talk about how great of a job they do for us pushing rural and county goals. I'll also say that part of the conference, they brought in speakers. So I got to hear Ben Carson, who's the head of housing development, Secretary of Housing Development. And his background is a physician, as we know, from campaigns. And so he's talking about the housing shortage, which we even have here, the housing shortage. And then also with mental health issues or the opioid addictions, how all of that ends up mixing in. All of those issues, you know, when you can't find a house swing, then you have an addiction and then it's a job issue. Like, really, really, all of these things are bad for the well-being of our society. And so he was very adamant about us looking at regulations that even at a local level, we might have in place, which I think, I'm not sure that we do this, but even like local or state level, that maybe is restricting some people's access to providing for themselves, you know. Do we really need, he gave this example, I thought it was outstanding. There is a state that the license to practice law was less expensive than the license to install a fire alarm. Do you really need a license to install a fire alarm? So, I think we were, we were talking about.
I don't know, can you? You do need a license.
Are you going to raise that, Pete? Can you get yours less than the bar?
I would question, Ann.
Yes.
When you introduce yourself in front of all these lawmakers and said where you're from, do they know where Lake D was or Lake County?
This is how I introduce myself. I said, "We are a county of 8,000 square miles with 8,000 people, so one person per square mile. And we made news in Oregon of being the Trumpiest county in Oregon."
Yeah. That's awesome.
Chain, drop the mic.
I'm just going to say I know my audience well. So I, I say.
Good you.
It's also fun to talk about Lake County because people are aware of the light pollution maps. And you go, oh, that dark spot, that's Lake County.
Well, thanks for representing the county, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's, again, I encourage people to be part of NACO and attend or use their resources. They're there to support us and so. I won't take up any more of your time, so.
Thank you, Ann, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone know if Dave Berman's in his office by chance? If he's not, we can move on to another item. No, I think he has to check. Yeah, I think we'll take care of Charlie. If Dave's on his way, we can take care of, I think, okay, Charlie, you're up. Veterans Department Career Organization.
Career Organization, yes. What I'd like to do is, I like to bring my administrative assistant from 19 and a half hours to 30 hours a week or more. We're able to do this because of the lottery dollars and state funding. One of the main reasons is because she's actually frontline now. To get her accredited, I need to have at least 25 hours a week. And it's going to be beneficial for us because the only way that we can do power attorneys and hippos before I see the customer is that she'll go start to pay for it and then they come to me. And then it takes quite a bit of training. And I want to set her up for success, value.
Yeah.
The reason I say that, you know, she's been working really hard to get her bachelor's degree for college. And she'll be graduating this July. And with all of her knowledge and experience at college, we can set her up to even take my place someday or another veteran service officer someday. Let's make Lake County, you know, the big guy trained as somebody to, you know, support veterans in another county even. But I'd like to see her take over for me someday. And to do this, this is the only way to do it, is by giving her the additional hours and the training.
Yeah.
And as of right now, Ann, the treasurer, she pointed out a few things. I'm still working on the budget. And as of right now, it doesn't look like that I will be asking for any more additional dollars. And I have heard some rumors about additional dollars possibly coming down from the state to support other little tiny events and things like that. If that's true, then I won't need any additional funding at all. But I don't want to lose the things that we've started that we've never done in the past, such as the national conference and the state conferences. And she'll be going to the state conferences and that's the only way that she'll be accredited is that she has to do one conference a year through the state. So if we can do that, the funding that I have, that'll work. We have four regional trainings that we do a year. She'll only need to do two of those. I'll have to do all four to keep her accreditation. For the nationals, unfortunately, it's out of the state every time and it does cost money. I've got enough for this year. For next year, we don't know what it's going to be like in Georgia and the cost yet. It hasn't come down, so I can't really budget that. I can kind of give a round ball figure on that. If everything works out right, I think we will have enough in the budget for me to go do the nationals next year. And like Ann had brought up, that lottery dollars could go up every year and the state funding. So that would keep us, you know, in sync of being able to still continue doing all that. And I don't want to lose also doing the mental health event that we're going to be doing. We did one last year, it's successful. We have proof it was successful. I'd like to see it go again. And there are other events. And having Kristen full-time, for at least 30 hours, she'll be my outreach specialist. She'll be doing all of the network. And I think that would be a positive move for us in our office. It would take a little load off of me and the whole department and focus on doing bigger and better events. I know you brought up something about the Vietnam veterans. And I am working with Washington, D.C. on an event. It could take a couple of years, but the possibilities of getting additional money to fund that event would come from them and not from us. So that would be a positive move for us and try to hit the wall here. And I'll let you know later more of what's going to happen with the law. But are there any questions?
Were you asking, were you wanting to bring this before us today to make a motion on it? Or?
Yes.
To approve it?
To approve it.
Okay. I think it'd be great to be able to, does anyone have any questions? Yeah?
Well, I think, I thought this process was used to determine or give direction to build it into the budget. And then the budget is actually the formal approval process of salary and personnel change.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
So I think, I think the motion would be to build it into the budget. You're giving that direction.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to build the VA services to reorganize their administrative assistant to have 30 hours or more, try to build it into our budget for 2019.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is it? I think that's it, Charlie.
You go first, thank you.
So yeah, if you can work that into the budget, that'd be great. Okay, next up on our list, we have Dave Berman.
First thing I want to do is identify that we have motion violation here at this table. Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
That's not in the budget.
Can I sit back?
Called due.
And I was just teething on that, by the way.
No, it's fine. Hey, we just want to make sure we don't interrupt your lunch hour.
That's right.
All right, so first item is WH Pacific.
What this is, the final, the reason why I had to have it ratified was they were closing out this grant last Friday. We had to get it funded in for them to close it and they were, FAA was cracking the whip. So I had to get it ratified last week. But what it is, is with the engineering costs for them to get, to finalize their, the Connect 5 grant project for the runway rehabilitation that we completed. It's all been completed. The time they were all done with the engineering costs, there was a little bit more to it. So we had an additional fee of $14,134.
Yes. Yeah, $14,034.
Thank you. And so we had to add that on to the end of the final item, the final bill to so they can close out this grant. So I had to get that done and signed and then put in so they can close it out.
Okay.
As you guys know, it's, we do pay that when we get 90% of that back with the reimbursement.
Yes. So basically, this is just kind of bringing it, something that you've been working on for a very long time. This is the last kind of fee that we kind of got hit with. And finish this off and then we get reimbursed up to that. I believe we were talking about it this morning.
Yes.
Should be around $60,000.
Around $70,000.
Around $70,000, yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
And I'll make a motion to accept the WH Pacific Amendment Number 1.
All right, I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next up is the Lake County Bridge Repair Amendment.
This is another grant with Regional Solutions. We were awarded $165,000 back last fall. Well, there was more dollars out there that they wanted to with the Regional Solution Grant Process. We got an additional $8,000 added to our grant. So we had to have that amended to the contract to show the dollars that we got with the grant, with the bridge grant, with the regional solution.
Entertain a motion. Again, these have been signed already, as you can see, by the chair. He had to leave early. But I'm just kind of going over and making sure that they're entered into the minutes and ratified. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the ratification Amendment Number 1 of Lake County Railroad Bridge Repair.
I will second that motion. Any, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you, Dave. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Ann, get you out of here.
Careful, whoever gets on that table, be careful.
So next up, we have Kevin Hock. His herbicide quotes for the Road Department Herbicide Program. Kevin is not here today. So I'll pull this up real quick. So I'm gonna pull this up real quick.
So basically, yesterday, I had a long talk with Jim Bailey and Kevin about this. We were going back and forth in emails and not really getting anywhere. And I was, I had a really rough night with animals. So I ended up just making a phone call and we ironed out exactly what it was. I originally missed the last two pages, which are actually quotes. One from Wilbur Ellis and the other one in the back from Nutrient Solutions. So Kevin put this out and I'm going to entertain a motion on exactly... Kevin never really actually got back to me on what his recommended motion was, but do you have any thoughts, Commissioner Albersen?
I don't have any thoughts. All I know is we need to order this so we can spray it.
Yeah, there's a timed thing on it. It was entered late into the agenda, but the fiscal impact will be around thirty-one thousand. So anyway, yeah, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Albersen.
I'll make a motion to accept the herbicide quotes for the Road Department.
I will second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have further discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
So who are you awarding it to, just from the...
Oh.
Sorry.
I'm assuming he's taking the lowest quote.
I believe he's taking Wilbur Ellis.
Because that's the lowest quote.
You want to amend your motion, Commissioner Albersen, to accept the...
But if I do that, he's not taking it.
Well, it's up to you, basically, to decide which one you prefer. I was under the impression of Wilbur Ellis. I'm sorry about that. So the motion is to award the bid to Wilbur Ellis and Company LLC, Commissioner Albersen.
Correct. Is that what you prefer to do?
I'm not gonna say that. I'm not gonna say that.
Do you want to table this?
I'll say more. I make a motion to accept the herbicide quote chose by Kevin Hock from the Road Department. And he can pick whether it be from Wilbur Ellis or Nutrient Solutions. And I'm assuming that he'll pick the lowest one, but they're only a few hundred dollars apart, so that's how I'm gonna make my motion. Because I don't know if Kevin, which one Kevin's picking. So I'm gonna leave it to his discretion to pick which one.
Well, I was assuming he was taking Wilbur Ellis's because he actually wrote it on the front for the fiscal impact of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one, which was the quote that Wilbur Ellis gave. So I'm assuming that he's not taking the grant, taking the quote from Nutrient Solutions.
Okay, I didn't copy that.
Okay, that's fine.
So I'll make another motion. I'll make the motion to accept the herbicide contract with Wilbur Ellis for thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-six.
All right, motion. I will second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I didn't see it on the...
Yeah, no, sorry. I apologize. It's my fault. Next up on our list, is that all good, Melanie? Do you have all that?
Thanks.
Next up, Melanie. We have about five minutes. Our presentation, the presenters aren't here yet, so we'll just continue, keep going. Melanie, the STIF application, if you'd like to fill us in on that.
I need you guys to approve my STIF application. It's been approved by the committee. It will, funding will come into effect in late October, early November. So we're implementing low-income transportation possibilities in our community. Meaning, our community meaning the county. There will be geographically equitable transportation throughout the county to serve low-income individuals. So that's my application that I submitted to my RC and then she said it looks great. I just need your approval to find my study.
So entertain a motion.
Yeah, I had a question on something, but I... No, I figured that out. Sorry. I was going through this yesterday and we were up at the meeting event and we couldn't, I couldn't focus till early this morning. I figured it out once I actually paged through it. But no, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Albersen.
I'll make a motion to accept the transportation, what do you call it, the transportation STIF.
STIF stands for State Transportation and Restoration Fund. So I'll just bear this thing a little bit. So you know the dollar income tax that we've been assessed for pay caring? That's what this is going. So that money is redistributed to where it came from. So we'll get fifty thousand dollars for the next six months and we'll get a hundred thousand dollars per year. So it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next five.
And just to clear, this will help with the budget that the seniors centers kind of struggle with and just for the next biennium, correct?
No.
No. This isn't affecting that. This is just going to...
This is a new transportation plan. This will be coming into effect. The funds will be redistributed in late October, early November, they predict. So this is a separate program for low-income individuals. They can use it to supplement and improve some aspects, but it's not to make any...
Gotcha. Okay, it's not to make any...
So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the STIF plan for the upcoming biennium transportation presented by Melanie.
I will second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you for doing that, too.
All right.
You want to do the OHA agreement?
Yeah, the OHA agreement. Actually, and I actually, could you fill us in on, well briefly on this because I didn't have a lot of time to go over this. I'm sorry, actually. I tried to fill this in and... Who submitted this? Was this...
So we provide contracted services. This is from the Organ Health Authority.
Yeah, this is from Organ Health.
This is something that you guys just take care of. It's housekeeping. This is an amendment to our agreement. I'm not sure what AND sixty-six services are, but they must have a minimum of seventy different individuals as recipients instead of whatever it was in the past. Sorry, I remember this person, too.
Yeah, I know. I'm actually thinking about tabling this for now because I was reading through it and I was looking it up online to try and figure out exactly what it was. I sent an email to Organ Health Authority and they did not reply yet. And I'm a little...
I agree with you.
I'm trying to make heads or tails on exactly what some of these numbers are. And I have no, if this is, I tried to even find it in minutes of prior, prior intergovernmental agreements that we've had. Like you say, it's just housekeeping. Do we usually do this every year? Is this annual?
We do it all the time.
How often?
Probably every quarter.
Every quarter?
We have one of these. It's a small agreement or changed agreement. And this change is that the mental health trust provides seventy individuals with AND sixty-six services.
Is there a time constraint on this, aside from...
I think Larry would like it as soon as possible.
Larry?
Grace.
I don't see his name on here. I confess, I mean, this is one of those things I'm kind of new to, so I'd actually prefer to kind of table this for now. We'll come back at this on...
We could bring it up tomorrow if you want to look over it.
We could. I mean, I could spend the day and I'll try and reach out to Larry. Because this is the first, I had a chance to look at it on Monday. And Mondays are always rough. People have a hard time getting through their emails and stuff, so I can understand not getting back from them yet, or not Larry himself, but the OHA.
We can make a decision tomorrow along with the...
Yeah, I think we'd like to table this for now. All right, the time is ten fifteen. We have scheduled a presentation from LCC... Oh, oh, thank you. A presentation from LCC WMA, Foss. Would you like to make a presentation?
I'm gonna kick it over to Jason.
Okay. Wonderful.
Give you the mouse.
Yeah, I'm Jason here. I'm the...
Jason, pleasure to meet you, James.
Nice to meet you, Jim.
All right.
I'll give you the seat just in case.
So while she's getting this up, I guess, so John O'Keefe is on the board for the KFC thing and then Foss, too.
Yes.
I think it's Foss.
Yeah, yeah. Now Foss is, Foss is my neighbor now.
Working on it.
Working on it, working on it.
Yeah, Pete Trader President, he was supposed to be here, too, but he got hung up.
Okay.
So he's, he couldn't make it this morning.
Oh, that's fine.
So it was nip and tuck. I'm getting here in time. So little background, the Lake County CWMA, a nonprofit county, and the county in 2014, Foss, 2013?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, it was right before I came on. So the Oregon State has a requirement, the county has a noxious weed supervisor. And so the county, instead of housing that themselves, they put twenty thousand dollars in the CWMA program where I handle those duties as well. So our CWMA, it's a partnership, federal, state and local government agencies. So we have partners in BLM, Forest Service, OEW, US Fish, pretty much everybody. Anybody in it could be tribes, local governments, towns, anyone interested in controlling noxious weeds in a defined area. So it could be Lake County or it could be a certain watershed. It could be a township, anybody that has a problem they want to tackle so that they can go apply for grants. So our program is a hundred percent grant funded, other than what the county puts into it. So kind of on a year-to-year basis on what we can and can't do. We have a local steering committee, like I say, made of members from BLM, Forest Service, and so on. And part of that is we develop an annual strategy for what we're gonna do in the county and where we're gonna focus the grant dollars. So we apply in December usually to Oregon Leadership Handling Board and then Oregon Department Bag, actually, OWEB gives Oregon Department Bag that money and then we apply for that money and then they give it back to us. So look up here, there's twenty-seven CWMA's in the state. We get, cover eighty-five percent of the ground throughout Oregon. So some of the ones up in northeast Oregon are watershed focused. Ours happens to be by the county. The only ones right next to us is not, Clamath doesn't have one, but we're working with them.
Okay, that was my next question. I noticed Clamath either that extends all the way up to Washington or...
Right.
They don't have one, yeah.
A lot of that is because it's sometimes watershed focused. See the strip where it's missing?
Yes.
Because that's the Cascades.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's tough to get into and mostly federal, so not a lot of private in there, other than Clamath and either the SWCD in Clamath or Clamath County Weed Board or somebody's trying to figure out what federal is maybe that must be.
Clamath County also has a fairly active staffed weed program with multiple employees that are county employees, full-time county employees. I think there's four of them in the county.
Wow.
So they, they have a fairly significant county budget for weed control as opposed to a grant program.
And with them, it's not just a CDMA that applies to OVA for grants. It can also be, yeah, it's not just CDMA, it could also be NRCS or county weed program or on and on. It doesn't have to be a CDMA applies for that grant funding. So in their case, they don't necessarily need it, but yeah. I think I hit all of them. So within our program, as far as the county's concerned, we do the coordination with Oregon Department Bag, where they're gonna treat. Not a hundred percent. They have their own directive about what they're gonna do, but we try to work with them as best we can. If we have a problem that we can't get within a grant, small populations and EDRR, early detection, rapid response stuff, OVA takes care of those for us. A lot of times throughout the season, we'll find something that just you didn't know was there and they come in and help take care of it for us.
And how many, did you say that there are in the state? We're, what, we're currently twenty-seven?
There's twenty-seven. So our CWMA, we created it in 2004 and when we started, we were doing five or six grants a year, you know, two or three ODA grants and then a grant from BLM, Forest Service. We did education, just as pertaining to grants, there's usually a grant, or an education component. We're trying to write one. And coordinator of season. Then once the county stepped in to fulfill that requirement for the state, we were able to keep a coordinator on full-time. That was his first full-time coordinator. And we coordinate the treatments within the county. So like the airport, industrial park and road, we try to take care of those.
Yeah, that's why we're staring over.
I'm not cross-eyed.
So that is exciting. They're all turning around for us, so we're looking.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. So we went from four or five grants a year to now we're doing sixteen large-scale projects throughout the county.
Okay.
So you make those, do you make those public so like the public knows where you guys are gonna be or...
Yeah, so it kind of depends. So say we have Dires Road project, that's kind of everywhere. So we fly it out of the paper and then we put the, kind of open it up to everybody. There's stuff in St. Warner Valley where we know everybody. So it's been, that's been a seven or eight-year program, so we'll necessarily advertise for that. Water District, we'll contact people that way. Kind of varies about how you advertise it or how you put it out there. Sometimes you get one guy and I get overwhelmed if you... We have free money and then everybody calls and then you have to turn down a lot of people and unfortunately, yeah. So now we're able to offer equipment loans. We have ATV sprayers, tractor sprayers and paper sprayers that we can lend out to people. So when I started that, it was, well, when I came in and CDMA, I only had two or three applicators in the whole county to take care of stuff, so I wanted to get people to take care of it themselves. So even when we do step away, they're gonna do things on their own. Do a lot of landowner education, like get a lot of phone calls, come out, help me. I don't know what to do. What are my options? I want to buy this crop later. What can or can't we do? There's a lot of stuff that's residual that you can't go back in, fall within right behind without help or something that I do. There's a lot of stuff that is residual, you can't go back in, fall, and right behind without help or something, I might do a crop. For the county, we represent the Oregon County Weed Managers Association, we have two annual meetings, one in the fall, and one in spring, just had one last week. And then, um, also part of the director, I'm the director for the Oregon County Weed, Oregon CWMA board for the region. So do our regions, um, Lake, Arnie, member, minimum portion of climate. So when we started in two thousand and fourteen with the county, we were hitting just scotch under two hundred thousand dollars a year. And, uh, now we're getting up to close to six hundred thousand dollars a year bringing in grant funds to do act treatments.
Are you doing all your grants yourself?
Yeah.
Go ahead and draw.
Yes, it's been pretty busy in the fall. Luckily, most of them are designed where you can do, um, all your grant applications are in the WMA, so it's more free time. So yeah, so in the five years since we started, we've tripled or almost tripled our grant revenue. Twenty thousand dollar investment, we got an extra one hundred thousand dollars.
And, and some of that grant, remember, we're the fact that the county's participatory and have an active weed program. Because one of the reasons we came to the county in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, or exactly when it was. And asked them to basically reactivate the weed board, get the ordinance going again, and some things like that. That's all in that statute was, because there were some grants out there that we couldn't apply for, because we didn't have an active county designated weed program. So, so it, it, not all of it certainly, most of it's because this guy's working extra. But, a lot of that are grants that are now available to us because the county is meeting the law, I guess, for lack of a better term. You know, they have, we have an active weed, or a county weed program.
And a lot of the grants you apply for is straight up, one of the first questions to ask is, do you have a county weed program? Do you have a county weed plan, that sort of thing? And that was kind of one of the things, first things that I did.
I just went through the weed plan, that you have here, so.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to catch up on that.
Yeah.
That's a considerable jump.
Yeah, we did pretty good. And, and the grant, in the grant world, everything is matched, so, the more participants you can have, the more dollars come in from other areas. It really bolsters your, your opportunities.
And these dollars, do they go to purchasing those, those quads and?
Most of that was donated, actually.
Most of that was donated, yeah, really.
Yep, and most of those came to us straight to foresters or landowners, and then I put it back to the fittings program, I put them all back together.
So most of this cost, or at least the, these dollars, most of these are going towards, uh, materials?
Yep.
And, uh, how much goes to labor, how many people do you?
Um, let me look here, I think, yeah, so, kind of expected that. So, this one is just where most of our funding comes from, county's three percent, BLM, Forest Service, I think it's thirty, I'm the biggest county manager in the county. Obviously, it comes from a lot of them, OVA. Oh, so, this is about a quick breakdown of the actual fall amounts.
Okay.
So this year, the NRCS has an asterisk, we usually do the fall annual grass treatment, but we don't really know what we're gonna get, so, obviously, so. Last year, I put in forty-five thousand, last year we got a little over a hundred thousand, so, somewhere in that range. Since you asked that question, my slide wasn't up. Probably ninety-five percent of it gets spent on herbicide application, um, pretty much everything's on the ground. Two or three percent surveying, somewhere near, for, for education. So, most of that, about a hundred and sixty-six thousand, is completely just on the ground trees. So, uh, OWEB just sent this out last week to us. Since nineteen ninety-nine, we've gotten fourteen million dollars in OWEB funds. A portion of that is the NRCS, a portion of that is the watershed council too. They do a lot of big structure projects that bring in a lot of money. So, up there, you can kind of see, uh, it's tough to read, but.
I, I can read it, Mark, can you?
No.
So since nineteen ninety-nine, there's a little note up there, Upland Habitat Acres, and that's all me. That was thirty-three thousand acres that we've done.
Yeah, too.
And Foss, I want to be able to point out too, that's gross, it's not net acres. I mean, I mentioned that.
So that, the concept there is when you go out to treat, you know, thirty-five hundred acres of Dyers Woad, and it's all in little mini patches, you might cover fifty or sixty thousand acres to get your thirty-five hundred acres treated, you know. But, you know, it's actually, the acres reported are the acres that hit the ground, not the sixty thousand acres that you covered to hit those acres.
Yeah, yeah, that's crazy how many acres there could be.
Yeah.
And recovered ground.
We're not scratching the surface, I mean, there's a lot to do, for sure. And the other takeaway from this is, OWEB does study it, for every million dollars we spend, creates fifteen to twenty-four million dollars. So, that twelve million dollars translates into a lot of, a lot of money that just comes straight back into the county. So there's Maple Lake County, and there's a breakdown of different types of projects, most of the red projects are the ones we've been working on. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of focus on the south end, but, and where our biggest population is too. A lot of smaller landowners down here.
Out towards the west side and?
Yeah, a lot of fifteen, twenty acre parcels, if people buy a piece of property, don't necessarily know how to take care of what they have. So, they spend a lot of time with us in county.
A little bit in Plush, you need to know.
Yep. Yep, we've been working out there quite a lot, Pepperweed project.
What do they spray, what do they put on for pepper weed?
So, most of your sulfur on products are good for pepper weeds, so, Telar, which is, now, I'm trying to say, Sulfosulfuron, Mepsofuron, Escort. And then we started doing a combination of Sulfuron, and made it here with milestone to, uh, a lot of times you'll have pepper weed, but you'll have something else next to it. And then, Sulfurons don't necessarily work real well on a lot of other things, like nap weed and stuff. So, we went with a combination to get everything at the same time.
Sorry, I'm.
Yeah.
My place, though. Having crap to pepper weed on.
Yeah, pepper weed's a, have fun to get rid of. But yeah, so ninety percent for eighty-nine percent of our money, depends on the year, it's spent on just on the ground, herbicide application, for the most part. You do a lot of hand pullings with Dyers Woad, a lot of the small patches that are just pulling, move on. So, say last year, um, did twenty-five hundred acres of gross treatment, which is, or, or a net treatment, I'm sorry. Gross treatment is actually quite a bit more. Annual grasses, they're kind of a big threat for the county, they have a lot of, they can have some serious detrimental effects, not only grazing, but increasing fire cycle. And on a year-to-year basis, we hire during the treatment seasons, just from like April to November, five to eight contractors, sometimes more, depending on the project, a couple of surveyors too. The only thing we don't hire local is our aerial applicators, just because we don't have one, so.
Foss, he's got time, he can use probably his, probably his license now.
Gosh, that's a lot of time hanging out and, they don't pay me nothing.
And if you notice in that picture, that's a Scotch thistle patch.
There's a person there.
That's a person, yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of stuff going on here south, like, we're trying to get through. And most of it boils down to just the grant dollars, what you can and can't do. Trying to develop a plan where either you push it back, or target certain areas from there.
Where is that exactly? That was south of Lake?
Uh, about five miles south of Lakeview, or two in the road, or road tracks.
Okay.
So this year, like I said, during the work time, we do a lot of grant bidding, just giving a quick overview of our projects. So we do pepper weed in Warner Valley, Dyers Woad's mostly from Lakeview South, Yellow Star Thistle, we found a big site up in Paisley, and they happened to run the fire cap through it, last year they had a fire, so, we're gonna try to get through that. Trying to do some EDRR and stop it before we get spread all over that fire. ODFW, we do, there's a lot of OWEB, obviously, but, Yellow Star, Dyers Woad, Napweed, and then the Fall Grant. In the fall, a lot of annual grass, produce a head and a lot of stuff.
I don't even remember Yellow Star being around two years ago.
There's not much, there's a little bit out west of town that we kind of got a pretty good handle on, and then, uh, like I said, that one site up in Paisley. Was it two or three years ago when the last fire was up there? They found it then, and then, uh, found another really big site the last year, and then the fire came through again, and then.
We don't, we don't want, no, we want to keep it, so.
Yeah.
How's it deposited in these areas, birds and?
And birds, clothing.
Vehicles, rigs.
Equipment's a big one.
Yeah.
A lot of times you find.
That's what I was curious of, because I only saw like five percent on education.
Yeah.
So if you go and treat a place, and then someone rides their four-wheeler through someplace, and then goes over there.
Right.
Starts all over again, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So the educational part would be.
Yeah.
And then, what's a purple thistle, or purple, what's the purple bowl?
Uh, Scotch.
Scotch, Canadian. Purple, purple thistles are Scotch, Canadian, Musk, uh, perennial, there's, there's a bunch of purples.
Yeah, because, I mean, well, I mean, around here, you, you, you'll get them as high as what you did show there.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, they, they run out wherever, four-wheeler, trailer, or.
Yeah.
For animals?
Animals, yeah, that's.
The, the thing you gotta realize, Ken, is that, that we're meeting the education demand we have, right, not a lot of people in the county, and you, it, the ones that are fearsome, it's hard to get all of them to listen, but we're running ads in the paper, we're at the fair, fairgrounds during the fair, we're, we're doing, as Jerry will get into this, we're doing education for the, for the, um, for landowners, you know. We're doing research education for the guys that have, the guys and gals that have, uh, applicator licenses for their property or whatever. So, we're meeting the demand, but it's, it's not a significant part of the budget, but it's an important part of the program.
Yeah, it's a poor part of the process, because, you know, we get nuisance calls all the time, I get nuisance calls, I'm a building official.
Right.
And I get nuisance calls on weeds all the time, you know, so.
If you get those directed to me, usually we find a way to either cost share it out, or have the chemical left over, or cost share it, or, I could squeeze it into a grant somehow.
Well, I mean, it's easy for me to go educate them, because, you know, I'm looking at whatever construction is going on, and then, you know, they've got a whole, uh, you know, I guess a car lot full of dilapidated crap, you know, with purple thistles thrown out, and then what, you know what I mean? And it's endless.
Yeah.
Well, even if, even if you're in that situation, and you just say, you know, whether they're asking for help or not, you say, you know, the program, the county will help you with this.
Absolutely.
It's not going over on your neighbors and everything else. That's, that's what the CWMA part of this is, is that.
Yeah, I, I want the brochures, I want to be able to just, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, destruction's my deal, you know, and, but, yeah, I mean, that's, if I'm gonna get calls on nuisance of weeds, I want to be able to hand them something and say, look, this is, you need to educate yourself on this.
So how does, uh, say you have a neighbor that's just infested with Scotch thistle or any other, what's the protocol for dealing with that?
So, from a county or from there, because there are ordinances here that. So that's a tough one, okay, so I'll get on my soapbox a little bit here, since you asked. Okay, so when I started, it was, uh, I had a little sheet, when I applied for the job over here, fixing shop, and said, you need to do this, this, this. One of those was, you know, noxious weed plan, noxious weed ordinance, noxious weed list, so.
Which we had.
We have, but, we had one before, and it was pretty vague. And then, two years ago, it's changed it again, not you guys, previous commissioners changed it again. So now we have one, but it excludes A1, A2, F1, and F2 zone property. So that's pretty much all the county's out. So there's not really anything, and I have a copy of the ordinance that I drafted that addresses some of that. We got together, put the weed board together with John, and, uh, drafted it, and it just kind of stalled. So, we presented it, and it never went anywhere.
Presented it to the county commission.
So for a code enforcement portion of it, it's almost impossible to, yeah.
Yeah, which is mine.
So you're being asked to.
I'm being asked to.
Teeth of anything.
And the, the history of this is when the previous county commission, uh, agreed to get involved with the CWMA financially, and basically meet the state rules by reactivating the weed board, and having a non-county employee designated weed supervisor, which is Jason, and stuff like that. They specifically asked at that time that we don't, we try to maintain, uh, a working relationship with the landowners, and not come across as an enforcement authority. Okay, and we told them at the time, um, because I was here, we told them at the time, that works for ninety-five percent of the people you're dealing with. They're gonna, you can go to them, say, you've got a problem, those big purple flowers are not really pretty, okay? They're a problem, and let us help you solve your problem. The other five percent need a stick, the carrot is gonna get you there. And so, and, and so, we were told at that time, well, do the best you can, we're not ready to get the stick out, okay?
But that five percent could start the whole thing going in.
And so, uh, the time's coming when we're, we're gonna need some, the time's here, actually, it's not coming, it's here. That we're gonna need the ability to do the stick, and oh, by the way, this group doesn't have, the CWMA doesn't have enforcement authority. And the way the, until the county adopts some stuff, the county weed supervisor doesn't have the enforcement authority. So, to give you an example, if you're not familiar with it, what happened in Clamath County is the same thing, they'll work with you, we're all gonna get along. When you hit the five percent, they tell you, okay, look, we're gonna come out and spray your problem, and then we're gonna submit you to them, we're gonna give you the.
Which, it's unpopular, but, to be honest, we're about one of the only counties that doesn't do that.
And so, what you're gonna hear at the end of this presentation, and I'm gonna jump forward right now, because this is an appropriate time to do it. We really need one county commissioner to be a liaison to the CWMA. You've got money in the program, both from the county weed board, county program, but also, we're doing a lot of work countywide, and it'd be very nice if one of you, maybe didn't make every meeting, but at least knew what we were up to. On more than, geez, once a year, we're gonna come in and tell you what we've been up to, okay? So, my notes here tell me that at the end of this presentation, I'm gonna make, make a pitch asking for a volunteer for one of these. Okay, so, I don't need an answer right now, but there's the pitch. I need, I need representation from the county with this group.
And we had one in the past, that didn't attend to.
Without the, hey, Foss, we gotta be careful about taking the stick and poking the bear. It's, it's here, get done.
Yeah.
Anything can get better.
So, that was kind of a segue, we went from the CWMA to the county weed board to the, and they're all interrelated. The piece we're missing right now, John can allude to this way better than I can, because he's got neighbors that are in the five percent, I'm sorry. We don't, we don't have the ability to deal with that five percent right now. And, I'm not saying we need to get the sheriff out there and put him in handcuffs and. And I'm not saying we need to get the sheriff out there and put him in handcuffs and take him to jail, but we need, we need to figure out how we can be more effective. And some of that's gonna be.
But see, that nuisance, I've been, you know, I've been told that that nuisance, you know, comes down on code enforcement portion, which is part of my department.
So I, as, since we're talking about it, I talked to some of the other county guys in the state, and uh. So I went back to New York County, that's where I'm from, and I know the county guy, they're pretty good, come from our. And they have an enforcement deal, and he said, God, we never just ever use it, but it's just there to have in front of people, said, look, you, you got to, like, just. This is something you've just gotta do.
And Clam has one, Clam has one.
Clam has one.
Enforcement office.
And I know the county weed supervisor in Clanton, it's the same thing, he, he very rarely uses it, but the stat, does not statute, but the county ordinance is there, it's enforceable if needed.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, they don't have to get the stick out very often, but even in Kirk County, Kev, I was in, he's there, he's the weed supervisor, you know, four or five times a year. Kirk County, that's minimal, many people is there. Anyway.
I agree with you.
Something to think about, anyway. And I'll talk, I'll talk to Brad when I do about this one. Yeah. Something to think about, I have to say, I can give you the draft that we put together, here's a good one. If you're open to it, just look at it and see what you think of it. And the other one, while we're talking about this one too, is uh, like, a lot of these big projects coming through, say Ruby Pipeline, we're seeing solar. Having some kind of code that says, you guys are gonna be responsible for this, you're not gonna get to step away and just forget about it after a year or two, like, this is your, this is your problem. You created a seven thousand acre solar farm, and now we have a big problem there, and having something there that could say, look. You gotta do this, because this is what, this is the problem it's causing. And Ruby came through and created a lot of problems, and. They essentially do nothing, I mean, they put a little bit of money into it, but it's just a. I don't know how to put it, just hush money, just, yes, we're there, but we're doing stuff, but is it effective enough? So I think that tool that makes them be effective was pretty important.
And you're just talking to the weed issues that come in after they disturb the ground, right?
Yeah, and it's just, it's just a straight soil disturbance, you make open ground, the first thing that's gonna come in is. The, the invasives, they may be noxious invasive, the weeds, they may be, you know, something else that isn't nearly as noxious, but you opened it up. You broke the native vegetation component, and it's ripe for having an issue, it's the place you're, if you're gonna have noxious weeds, it's the place you're gonna have.
Well, you can go anywhere on the Ruby Pipeline and see.
Yeah.
Well, it should be part of their cleanup contract, forever.
It actually should be part, and it was, in their reclamation plans, it's in there that they will treat the weed, but. So you're gonna get somebody from Washington DC with Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to say you're not meeting your reclamation. Yeah, in Lake County, oh yeah, they're all over that.
Yeah.
So no one pleases that part.
And that, that one's a big piece of the puzzle, I mean, you know, we're gonna lose seven thousand acres of wildlife habitat, and we're doing some. And if they don't do what they say they're gonna do to mitigate, then you gotta, gotta have something behind you there.
We'll work, we'll work on that, with Kenny on the nuisance deal, too, we've started.
The, the, the threat from like the solar or Ruby isn't that specific seven thousand acre per acre. I mean, we've got, you know, how many million acres in Lake County, okay? That's your source, and that's where it spreads from.
Right.
Okay, so if you're not dealing with your source purely, then your seven thousand acres turns into sixty thousand acres, turns into, you know, all of a sudden now Medusa Head is county flower.
Right.
So it's, it's a real concern.
Yeah. Is that inside their solar fence line, or is it?
Yeah, because that's where they're gonna.
Yeah, so they, yeah, they should be contained, uh, I mean, it's contained at that fence part, but it's gotta be dealt with, it's gotta be treated now.
And I don't, I don't wanna paint these guys as the black hat, you know, but they, when the discussions that we've had with them. At least the Ruby people early on, and I'm assuming the solar people, I kind of got out of the solar stuff when I quit. ODFW, they're all over it, yeah, you bet, we'll do that, yeah, you bet, but Ruby's a black as example, if they don't.
Then what?
Then what? The neighbors are holding the bag.
Right.
So as these, as these projects are presented, the county commissioner decided that would be something to.
Well, the Ruby Pipeline part of that, their agreement, they do have, they're supposed to be doing weed control.
But the reality is, is, and this gets back to the, the weed board, the county ordinance and all that stuff, I can't protect all six hundred and forty-two miles of Ruby Pipeline in Utah and Nevada and every place else. But in Lake County, if we had an adopted. Weed plan and some language for enforcement authority. Basically, we could say to them, either you are with the CWMA to address this problem and help fund it, or we're gonna give it for you and send you.
King Commissioners, it's its own beast, it's its own.
Yeah.
It is, it is, uh, when, when I was presenting with it, it's like. I mean, he, Jason Mill was, I mean, he's a professional, you really know what they're up against.
And you gotta keep in mind that the world's kind of changed, obviously, continues to. When we were before the commissioners, to get this started in twenty thirteen, Ruby was brand new, everybody was singing kumbaya, yeah, we're gonna do this, they were all in, you know? The solar project in two thousand fourteen was forty acres out here, a black hat, it wasn't really a big deal, and it didn't, you know, there was another forty proposed for. For Christmas Valley, and it, it wasn't like we're talking about, we're talking about Little B for you, we're not talking about seven thousand acres, okay? So now we have the potential to get big in a hurry, and we have a funding problem, okay? I'm not saying it's gonna happen, you know, because in the discussions with the solar folks, they're all in, until they're not.
And I don't think it's, and too, that too, I've talked to the solar folks quite a bit about it, it's not gonna scare them off, this is just, this is normal business anywhere else, just, we just don't have it ahead of us right now. And this is just.
Well, it's no different than the pipeline from, you know, the, the, the fuel plant now, clear to the, uh, per light. You know, they're gonna go down the railroad, they're gonna disturb the soil, and I, I get that's county, that's county.
The, the nice thing about that, though, is they're going right down the railroad, and we're already using the county's funding to treat the rail.
Right.
Well, we're getting to that later in the presentation.
Sorry.
Yeah, how long do we have?
Yeah, you can fill.
Oh, wow.
But I'll get angry.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna need to take a break for lunch before then, so.
Well, we don't want to hear that.
No.
And when Melanie gets angry, then it's like that.
We'll give you another half hour, maybe, so.
We won't take that long.
Okay, so we've talked about all of that. These are our projects. So what do we do with the county dollars? Because that's what it boils down to, what are you getting for your twenty thousand besides some goodwill? We do the recertification classes, so get a commercial pesticide license, you have four hours of continuing education every year. Provide all those in the county, do one in the spring, one in the fall, actually, Christmas Valley, the fourth of April, if anyone's interested. Well, one-on-one meetings, did the county weed plan, the weed list. Other thing we've been working on that we didn't have before was a cost share program for the county. Last year, OEB put out a portion of their, so we have this big pot that goes to ODA for weed control, they cut off a chunk of that to give just to the county's program. So we did that, we got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, and we did cost share with folks. Trying to get money back in the county, with the goal of having continuous funding for the county's programs. A lot of folks who are budget shortfalls and all that, and trying to find some outside source of that. So we had this big pot last year, we have a really small pot this year, we got it again, I think there were seven of us, everyone applied, they got it. Um, and we're trying to, with the County Weed Manager Association, we're lobbying, trying to get some annual funding for it. Through the state? Through the state. The other thing, we're back to the city, and is, part of the mitigation plan potentially is setting aside a full money to do a cost share. Up in the Christmas Valley area to help combat the weed problem. So hopefully, that's gonna be a long-term thing, maybe we can build on that as more projects come in, potentially. I don't know what we're talking about, we started off with fifty thousand, now we're back to ten, twenty, or, I don't know where it's ended up yet, but.
And annual.
Yeah, anyway, so it's something. But yeah, so we're working on continuous. Match dollars, or uh, cost share dollars for the county program, actually, it's gonna be a big deal, because that way I can move it around wherever I want, it's not necessarily, yeah, this thing, I can kind of. Have some direction, usually the grants are pretty, this is where you gotta be, this is where you gotta be with the grant money, or with the county grant money, we can go here and there, and. Got to the real places we didn't always hit before.
Yeah.
Oh, and we also do biological control program through ODA and AFIS. So again, with the county, we, we're coordinating projects, so like the city of Paisley, we've got twenty-seven landowners, we're gonna do some uh, go ahead control out there.
That's kind of really bad.
It's really bad. Yeah. Look, last year, I think we only did four or five, and this year, a bunch of people jumped up forward.
See, the baseball fields here are favored with goheads, and I, I never seen them things around here in my life.
They just come in on the tires and everything else.
What's the base, new baseball guy, how's the?
General buddy?
Yeah, buddy, we're talking to Buddy, and we're going to do all that for him, so we're gonna clear it all out, and I think, I think we got a. Wilberels and Crop Correction Services, get us all the chemicals to be able to go in there, wipe it clean, with the goal of putting down some. Buddy wants sod, I don't know if he gets sod, it's expensive, but. Putting in sprinklers and some, some grass, at least now compete the goheads anyway. Yeah. Plus, in the Hill School District, we do the fiber sheds out there in Warren Valley. Coordinate some treatment with the correctional facility. Water users in West Side, Water District in the hill, and then somewhere like irrigation district too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then represent County Food and Weed Manager Association. Yeah. Yeah. I lost place.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our biological control, most of our grants like have a. Wide approach to what we're doing, so it's biological education, survey, spraying, mapping. This one is super good for the county, it's uh, biological control's really expensive, there's like fourteen to one return on investment dollars, but still. Some of these bugs, like the tow flax that we released up in Christmas Valley, they're like five bucks a piece for a bug. And, you know, they're giving us school.
And they're not big bugs.
No, they're, they're being nice, when you can see, like, in the top right corner there.
So is that working out, though, I mean, can you see some?
So biological controls usually feel good, happens to be for tow flax, it's really effective. We did a bunch out of uh. Golf lies for Canadian thistle in Warren Valley, and it did a really good job. Usually it's, it, all it does is reduce the population or weaken it.
And so are those, they die out pretty quickly, you know?
Yeah, we're having a hard time getting some stuff established, just because of cold winters, so they collect them in another place, and then they bring them to us, and if we don't have the same climate. We usually lose a big portion of the population we turn out, until you get that local phenotype that, that's adjusted to ours, and then it kind of.
The driving theory behind biological control is you do it once, it's really expensive to start up, and then the bugs are out there, and when the tow flax starts to come out, then all, they expand and, and it's self-sustaining, but. Something about minus ten in December.
Right.
That's why I was asking.
Usually decreases the. Very rarely ever wipes it out, just.
But you could see in like in Warren Valleys, you could see that.
Yeah.
Where they did have an effect.
Grace and I, before I was with the CWMA, I don't know, it was probably two thousand twelve, did a bunch of. Making this a biocontrol, it did really well, it cut down on it quite a lot, but. Yeah, it's not necessarily the answer, it's usually to stop the act until, either it's so big you can't do nothing about it, or you're gonna put this in place, it's definitely coming to do something else. Or, or like in this particular example, landowners didn't want herbicide, but we do biological control, same thing, we have one out by the prison in place for spot nap weed. Landowners didn't want, didn't want chemical control, we don't have any way to make them, so. Or, yeah, landowners didn't want chemicals, so we did biological, because, yeah, they're sick. Yeah, Russian nap weed, and those are the ones we're having trouble getting established due to the cold weather, and we put it, the Russian nap weed likes to slow land, then it happens to be that we also fled it out. Every four or five years, and then, you know, they flood it very well. Can you bring that in for what we, this part of uh, what process, you're, you're planting it or spraying?
No, we're, we're trying to get rid of the nap weed, but we wanted to do it, so then we did the biological controls.
It sounded like you were having, you said, I thought you said that you were having trouble getting it established.
The biological.
Okay, gotcha.
So they form a ball of plant, and then they like go on to other where?